Bobby, we're getting ready to start.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. Attendants, roll call, Mr. Reba.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Early. Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Moholic.
Uh, what's your state through the phone tonight?
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Yannick.
Here.
Announcement of the executive sessions held as follows, March seventeen, two thousand and fifteen on personnel and litigation, March twenty-six, two thousand and fifteen, personnel. Public announcements in recognition. Dr. Butler.
Dr. Butler. Good evening. We have a number of recognitions this evening. And, uh, without further ado, we'll get right into those. Mr. Donati will be helping me distribute certificates as we move along here this evening. First of all, uh, we had, um, one hundred and three students, high school students, participate in MathCon two thousand and fifteen Challenge. Out of forty-five thousand students, three hundred and thirty schools representing forty-two states, we have fifteen students placed exceptionally high and qualified for, uh, further competition. It is our pleasure to recognize these students this evening coming from all three of our high school buildings, Career Center, the Academy, and the high school. All of these students scored in the ninetieth percentile. In fact, many of them, if not all, above the ninety-fifth percentile. So, uh, a number of students could not attend this evening because of conflicts with other activities, but we're gonna go ahead and include all the names. Dario Di Amato, if you're present here this evening, if you come down, please. Jeremiah Budgeon. John Gordon. Stefan, excuse me, Stephen Gower. Giuliano Ikevik. Ryan Keegan. And due to my bad cold, I'm not shaking hands, Mr. Donati's shaking it. Megan Llewellyn. Joseph Ruschen. Aza Miller. Emma Miller. Nicholas Mettison. Pranjil Satija. Eric Shaw. Jorge Torado. And finally Samantha Zerimba. How about a nice round of applause for all of the students? Again, that's a significant achievement. We're so proud to have representatives from all three high school buildings.
Dr. Butler, may I just also compliment, uh, Mrs. Raphael Billett, uh, one of our outstanding, uh, math instructors here in the Hazleton area school district for her fine work in preparing these students for the national competition in Chicago.
Thank you, Dr. Antonelli. Next, uh, we have a slew of, uh, students who, again, just excelled, uh, beyond expectations at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science. Representing several schools, we'd like to recognize those students at this time. Kim Perez. Kevin Harry. Elizabeth Megalogic. And Matt Michelin. In the area of computer science. Again, the Award of Excellence, Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science. Mark Abemalik. Chris Bellis. Nancy Boogie. Dario Di Amato. Madi, excuse me, Mahdi Dura. Olivia Elzwick. Christian English. Betsy Gutierrez. Jonathan Kasek. Yandre Del Rosario. Jordi Gonzalez. Colin Grabash. Julissa Herrera. Sophia Luzen. Lisa McDonough. Benjamin Oswald. Benjamin Poffey. Tessa Porchansky. Madison Palumbo. Amber Book. Excuse me, Amber Puck, excuse me. Pranjil Santija. Rebecca Shell. Michelle Toga. And Samantha Zerimba. Again, how about a nice round of applause for these students? Also representing, uh, Pete, uh, uh, from the castle, uh, two representatives, uh, from the PJF competition in eighth grade, Julia Romaldo. Congratulations, Julia. I'll give you all these, Mr. Donati. Sarah McManus. And Julio, I apologize for mispronouncing your, mispronouncing your first name. Raymond Perez. From drums, we have Alex Admentler. And Sophie Giarden. From Heights Terrace, grade eight, Sarah Habel. From West Hazleton, we have four students, Alexandria Chura. Mackenzie Roboget. Rakovic, excuse me. Mackenzie. Sharon Cruz. And Natalie Burgos. And from Freeland, we have five students. Caitlin Stanic. Caitlin Byler. Elias Simolinski. Hannah Simmons. And finally Marley Horaschak. And now moving from the academic arena to the athletic arena, we'd like to, uh, shout out a big congratulations to Coach Joe Gabio. Let's see Joe here this evening. Um, obviously, congratulations to our girls for winning the Wyoming Valley Conference Championship. Unfortunately, fell a little bit short in districts, but, uh, if you were at that championship game, it was quite a victory. I know Joe's extremely proud of the girls, we're very proud of the girls, and we, uh, just congratulate them on a super season. We'd like to recognize Felicia Gregel. Okay, Felicia, uh, one of our high school swimmers, uh, won the two-hundred-yard freestyle at the District Two-Four Class Triple-A Swimming Championship. Also won the one-hundred-yard butterfly. Quite an achievement for Felicia, and we, uh, congratulate her at this time as well. And finally, from the athletic arena, we go from swimming to bowling. And we have three bowlers we'd like to recognize. Uh, first of all, Jamie Kaluga. Jamie, are you here this evening? Okay, she, uh, won the first place, the championship, in the two thousand and fifteen Pennsylvania Eastern Regional Girl Singles Championship. Also placing quite well is Jenna Raypatch. And finally, Mike Walters. And finally, tonight, we'd like to recognize one of our principals here in the district, Mr. Phil Letella. Phil is, uh, the principal of the Early Learning Center, and Arthur Street, combined. He's being recognized tonight for the Dr. Walt Keely Leadership Award. I'd like to invite Casey Hersiem up, uh, just for a few words to, uh, to combine with my compliments and comments on Phil. Again, we have an outstanding administrative staff here in the district. Phil Letella has, uh, set himself aside in terms of his, uh, efforts to promote community involvement, parent involvement in his schools, and, uh, has just, uh, brought terrific energy and excitement, uh, to the schools and his work at Heights in particular. And we just wish, uh, wish him much success in the future, and we're congratulating him on his achievement. Casey?
The Dr. Walt Keely Leadership Award was established in two thousand and five to recognize outstanding principals in the state of Pennsylvania. Throughout the entire state, dozens of nominations came in to our PTA Council and the state level. And Mr. Letella was selected as an individual deserving of this award for establishing significant parent involvement, creating a high-quality learning environment, strengthening the PTA organization, and advocating for all children openly interacting with the community. He goes well beyond the day-to-day demands, and we would like to congratulate him on behalf of his PTA at the Early Learning Center, the Hazleton PTA Council, and the state PTA Council.
Mr. Letella would have been here this evening, but unfortunately, he's taking care of an issue in his building across the street and couldn't join us, but in his absence, we certainly congratulate him. And that concludes the recognitions, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. At this time, public comment directed to the board on agenda items only. Mr. Benomo?
No one. Nobody signed up.
Okay, uh, next, let's approve-
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
May I, uh, take this moment just to thank, uh, Dominic Kirk for showing me through the, uh, he offered all board members the opportunity to go through the, uh, Hazleton Area Academy of Science yesterday.
Okay.
And I very, very much appreciated his guidance and the opportunity to interact with him and with other students and teachers. Uh, it was, it, I considered it a, 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 a very, very nice gesture on the part of the, of the Hazleton Area Academy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Childs. Uh, I just found out we do have one person that would like to speak. So if you would come up to the microphone there, state your name, your address, and which agenda item you'll be speaking on.
Um, my name is Alanza Williams. Um, I live in West Hazleton. My son attends MMI. And I had put an application in-
I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry. This is not an agenda item, so if you want to talk about that particular subject, you're gonna have to wait till the end of the meeting. These are only on agenda items, meaning any-
I have no problem waiting.
Okay, we're just, that was my fault, that's my fault. You have to wait till the end, 'cause it's not on the agenda. Sorry about that.
I didn't get a paper.
No, that's okay, no problem. Okay, at this time, approve the board meeting minutes, uh, from the regular board meeting of February-
So moved.
Mr. Reba.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Approve the Treasury's report from February.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Reba.
On the Treasury's report, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, and at this time, I'll turn the program over to Dr. Antonelli.
Curriculum and instruction, approve items one through twenty-six with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on items one through twenty-six? Mr. Reba.
On numbers one through twenty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Special education, ESL, and alternative education, approve items twenty-seven through thirty-two with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers twenty-seven through thirty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion pass.
Recommend board approve relocating the Hazleton area Alternative Opportunities Program to seven fifty-five North Vine Street, as stipulated in the attached documents, effective August first, two thousand and fifteen.
We need a motion.
So, so moved.
And a second.
Uh, and just as a matter of getting it on the floor, talk about it.
Yeah, I, I was unaware that we were actually gonna vote on this tonight. I know that we did talk about, very briefly at the committee meetings, that we were gonna talk about this. It almost, I, I don't know if we could wait on, on voting for this, if we, if we could table this.
We need a second.
We need a second, actually. We need a second.
Second on Dr. Childs.
On Dr. Childs' motion.
Doug, I'll make that second for, uh, purposes of discussion.
Now, any questions or comments?
Uh, just to mention, again, when we talked about last week, what I was understanding from Dr. Butler and from Mr. Gunshore, was that they would come up with a cost analysis of what it would cost to get things taken care of at the Vine Street. Am I, am I too far in advance of that?
Dr. Childs, what we confirmed was their monthly lease, including utilities. That's what we were-
No, we're talking also, Dr. Butler, about the need, what, what renovation costs we would need. I think Mr. Benomo specifically brought up the safety doors and things of that nature.
Yes, thank you.
We need to have a better handle on how much it's gonna cost.
Thank you, Dr. Childs. We, uh, Mr. Gunshore, correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but we were told that, that we would not be responsible for any renovations whatsoever to move into the building or grandfathered into the building. If there are any improvements to be made, twenty percent of any budgetary expenses towards those improvements need to go to ADA, ADA compliance.
Dr. Butler, it was mentioned that the building would have to be painted before we would move in. Who is gonna be responsible for painting the building?
Well, again, I, I thought we could do that in-house, and, uh, quite frankly, I know, um, one idea might be to have the, the kids participate, and that is community service project. It's an idea.
I, I had stated at the committee meetings, I'm gonna state again tonight. Number one, I don't think, uh, uh, you know, we were paying ten thousand dollars as the, the low bid to paint Harmon Geist, the locker rooms, I can't fathom how much it would cost to paint that entire building. Uh, secondly, my theory was, we're, my theory is stay status quo until we find out where we're going long-term. And to go into any agreement, there's, there's rumor that they might be willing for a lease purchase agreement. I think we're pushing this way too far, too fast, before we actually know all the details as to what's taking place. So I'll be voting no.
On the question, again, um, we sat at a budget meeting last night, and there were a couple of things that came up that I, I know they didn't put a question, only put a question mark on my face, but I think it bothered Mr. Wallace a little bit when asked, like, who owns the building? And they said, "Mother of Grace." I said, "No, I don't." The church still owns it, right. But I, I know for certain that, that Mother of Grace still doesn't, uh, they do not own that building. When I came on this board eight years ago, we talked about, well, things bothered me, and, uh, and the things that bothered me specifically, one of the things was, uh, hiring teachers from out of town. But we still, we went on to do that. In this situation, we have a local person who pays taxes in the area, okay, that we're gonna take this contract off and give it to another person from out of town, a, a corporation or whatever. They, they add nothing to the Hazleton area. They're, they're collecting rent, so I also, as Mr. Wallace says, I'll be voting no for this also, for that, for those specific reasons.
Dr. Butler, who does own the building?
Youth Services Association of Pennsylvania.
Who we had contracted with priorly, prior to this, I believe, at one time, didn't we?
I don't know that, Mr. Wallace.
We, we did for, for Alternative Education Services, yes.
Doc, where are they out of?
Uh, to be honest with you, I, I don't know, I don't know their home base. It's not Hazleton.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, again, I saw him on the phone this evening, um, and I'm, I'm not, I don't really care who owns the building. I'm, I'm not really interested in if they're in town, out of town. Um, I also will be voting no, because as I stated from the beginning, and let me make it very, very clear, I hope I'm coming across clear, I support the Alternative Education Program in the Hazleton Area School District. I support those young men and women who are trying to make a, a change in their life. These, this building needs to be in a location where the environment will not be a deterrent to those kids. Let's get it out from around other homes and streets that are easily accessible to the, to the negativity that has been in these kids' lives. I said this when we first started the program, I will vote no to any property that is located in or around other residents. No.
Well, based on everything that's been, do you have something else to say?
What I, what, I would move that we tabled this discussion?
Well, motion to table.
I just said I had to vote, Doc. I, I, I think in fairness to the, the, let's just go ahead and vote. I mean, the, 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 the motion agenda is for that location, and, and there are people who clearly are probably strong against it or for it. So I think we, we, we vote?
Well, well, Bobby, my, my thought in, in tabling this is that I don't see enough information in front of us at this point to make the decision. That's the problem, and, and it's not, uh, you know, you're, you're voting for placement. I think none of the other comments we heard actually said that. Uh, and I, at this point in time, I'm looking still for more information from Mr. Gunshore and from Dr. Butler. I wanna, I, I wanna know how the painting is done. I wanna know, uh, one of those things that are happening before, before we make a decision.
Too many questions.
Here's the prob, here's my problem. Uh, our attendance rate is about fifty percent. So, it, it, the one day, I think we had thirteen students there. So for thirteen students, we have two supervisors, six full-time teachers, an SRO, uh, uh, a, uh, guidance counselor, a nurse, not saying that this hasn't been needed, but before we expand and go bigger, we have to get the program to be more efficient, and then we can look into these things. That's, that's why I'm voting no. Let's, we've only been doing it for eight months. Let's get this down and nail it and do it the right way, and then we can look long-term as to where we'd like to go and how we'd like to expand it. That's just my own theory.
Okay.
That's why I'm voting no now, and then we can go from there. I don't think we need that extra space until we get the program done the way we want it to be done.
Okay, um, tabling then under these circumstances would be specifically so that it remains on the agenda down the line. Not, it has nothing to do with, with, uh, I, I, what I don't wanna see is vote down something that, that then no longer comes back in front of us, because it still is a reasonable deal.
All right, then we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Doc, it-
Okay, Mr. Reba.
On the motion to table, Mr. Benomo.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. John.
Yes.
Mr. Moholic.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
No.
Ms. Yannick.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
Security, approve items thirty-four through thirty-seven with one motion.
We need a motion. I'll make a second. Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers thirty-four through thirty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion pass.
Nutrition, approve items thirty-eight through forty-one with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers thirty-eight through forty-one, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion pass.
Transportation, recommend board approve the attached school bus route changes.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Number forty-two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion pass.
Technology, approve items forty-three and forty-four with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just have one, one comment. I'd just like to thank Dr. Briggs for his extraordinary work on, um, uh, the Skyward analysis and, um, you know, looking into this. You know, on paper, it does look like it's, um, it's, it's a huge cost to our district, and it is, it is a big cost. But, you know, in the long run, I think this is going to save our district money, so, thank you.
I agree.
I agree too. Any questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-three and forty-four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion pass.
Student activities, athletics, and extracurricular, approve items forty-five through forty-seven with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-five through forty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion pass.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items forty-eight through fifty-nine with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Bobby.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Okay, good, thank you. And I'm not exactly sure what agenda item it is, because my agenda item is, um, one short of what you guys are on. Looking at the one, uh, that we're talking about, it's probably fifty-three. Uh, looking at, for approved trailer that he looks at elementary middle school as surplus and authorized to sell. There's, I know fifty-three-
That's fifty-two, that's fifty-two.
Fifty-two, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, I'd like to remove that, uh, from the side of that, uh, the motion about a year or so ago with a nine, uh, zero approval, uh, those trailers were, uh, given to, donated or at least, uh, being let, used by the WILC Center. Uh, again, that was a board motion, and I'm not sure why this is, why this is on here, but those were, uh, were given to the WILC side.
Yeah. Bobby.
Go ahead.
Bobby, there's one problem, and that is that the work that's gonna be done at the castle is probably going to, we're probably gonna need to remove those trailers. Bobby, am I correct in stating that? Because of the, the heights that they're gonna have to get to, and they, we're gonna have some real problems, Eddie, if we don't remove those trailers, am I correct? if we don't remove those trailers. Am I correct?
We've never booked the architect end in here and they both agree to do the work on outside of the building, not only on the basement of the building, but also around the site work where I have supply problem, the trailers will have to be moved.
That's gonna be a problem.
So the Wilsey Center can have the trailers, but they're gonna have to move them?
So kids were in there, would we be moving those trailers?
There's no kids.
If students were in there, would we be moving those trailers?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure why this district would move any trailer off of any property at this point because if anyone doesn't think sometime shortly we're going to have another classroom size issue, then we're all mistaken. Seriously, I can't see this. Again, one, all of a sudden there's this, we've gotta work on this side of the building where those trailers are. All of a sudden, now that there's not kids in there, I, to me, I can't even fathom the thought of selling something that we know we're gonna leave. We're gonna probably get 10% of what we purchased those for and then down the road, three to five years, we're gonna buy them for 160% of what we sell them for this month, guaranteed. But I just, you know, I'd like to see the architect drawings of what they're doing on that side and why they need that specific area. So if that could be provided to me before this vote, I would appreciate that.
Well, then, there's a motion by Mr. Mahalik to have this removed for tonight. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, then. Questions or comments? We already spoke on it. So, Mr. Reba.
Okay, so we're gonna amend the motion to remove item 52 as the amendment that we're gonna vote on.
Still on the question, that's most definitely, Eddie, is this gonna most definitely change the scope of the work? It's a million dollar project that we're doing at the castle. I mean, and that's with having the trip, well, I'm saying, and that, so this is gonna put a, I think, I think they approximated 990,000 for this job, but that was on the conditions that the trailers were gonna be removed, wasn't it? From Alfred, or from the other guy, Barry Isaac, right, right, right.
I would just like to ask Mr. Gunshore, is the scope of the work contingent upon the removal of the trailers from the site?
We've gotta be into this three or four years, Eddie, no? Is it really? So, I mean, like, we're living on borrowed time with that? Can this wait till the next month's meeting to vote on or not? Or is that too late?
And I guess we are in some bit of a timeframe here because we want the majority of the scope of the work to be completed before the start of the new school year. And we are dealing with water infiltration issues in that part of the building.
Okay, and I can't, to no fault, it's all really here, Mr. Gunshore. Is this a story of the architect from, I just heard him just a couple of years old, Mr. Gunshore? I'm not so sure. As a taxpayer, I can swallow spending a million dollars on something we just spent 30 million dollars on less than 10 years ago. How, I mean, this is outrageous. Are we gonna be going after the design, the architect, the general contractors for this?
I can't answer that on the original project because I was not involved in it. But the problem now, Mr. Mahalik, is there's a significant water infiltration on the side of the building where the trailers are located and it's mostly from the site, not the building. And so the trailers have to be removed so that the problem can be remediated and stop the water from leaking into the elevator pit, which is causing damage. And if it's not corrected, then we'll be replacing the elevator very soon.
Well, this is outrageous and I hope every taxpayer is as outrageous as I. Now, we're gonna spend an additional million dollars on a 30 million dollar project that's less than seven years old. Ridiculous.
Anything else? Mr. Reba, you wanna read that again so we know what we're voting on?
We're voting on an amendment. There's an original motion to approve items 48 through 59 and there's an amendment on the floor to remove item 52 from that grouping and not approve item 52.
So we have a motion in a second, so go ahead.
Mr. Benomo on the amendment?
No.
Dr. Childs?
No.
Mr. John?
No.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Ms. Yannick?
No.
Mr. Chapman?
No.
Amendment does not pass.
I have a question on item 57. Why are we hiring four architectural firms?
We were meeting with Mr. Benomo, the chairman of Buildings and Grounds, and we are approving on the agenda tonight a list of our capital projects. And there is a pretty extensive list and they're smaller projects, but we thought by hiring more than one firm, we can divide it up and distribute the workload so we can have multiple projects going on at the same time.
So.
Have we interviewed these architectural firms?
Mr. Gunshore screened the architectural firms. Did you interview them?
No. No, they were selected based on a numerical rating, based on values for each category. And you're actually not hiring them, you're just approving their.
So just so I get this in my head, not to interrupt, so if project one starts in March, we're gonna pick one of these four firms.
Correct.
Project two starts in April, we're gonna pick one of the other three.
Correct.
And so it's gonna be a rotating basis among these four firms while the projects are coming to keep everything going. That's what we're gonna do?
Right, so you don't have to go through the long drawn-out RFQ process, which could add four months.
So we're not gonna hire four firms, but only hire one to do all the projects and the other three are just there? We're gonna rotate this through on a one-project-by-project basis?
Correct.
Great.
Well, there are a couple of projects that are already in the pipeline, Tony, am I correct? Castle's already in the pipeline.
Yes.
That's, they've already, that's already been drawn up by who?
Plus, the castle appears to be slightly over a million. This is for projects that are under a million dollars.
So the purpose is to use the four of them to keep the projects going so we don't get weighed down with one firm doing all the work?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can an architectural firm do more than one project at a time?
Yes. Depending on the size of the firm.
Well, Mr. Reba just said they're small projects. So why would you need, I don't like the part about rotating, everybody getting a piece of the pie. I don't like that.
The problem with the larger firm is a lot of times, depending on the size of the project, they wouldn't be interested in it. You know, because of the size of the firm, it's not worth their while to engage in that project.
Clarence, I would've been fine just hiring one of these four.
Me too.
All right, but if you're gonna hire all four, then you better use all four. Otherwise, there's no sense of having them.
Well, my problem is, Robbie, that we're taking turns and I don't think we take turns. Be honest with you.
I agree with you, Mr. John. Again, I wanna have it best.
Absolutely.
So without looking at the same situation we're looking at the castle.
Which group was ranked, do you remember off the top? I know you gave us the form and everything, but do you remember which group was ranked at the top?
Kesselman and the AE group.
They were even?
One point apart.
Where are they from, Mr. Gunshore?
They're both from the Wooksborough area. So your reimbursable expenses would be lower because legally they could charge you for travel to get here.
Then, I would make a motion to this, that we just hire the two firms that were finished first and second, that they're, that it is cheaper for us instead of bringing all four of them on board. We're not gonna plan on using them.
We have a motion by Mr. Wallace. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on that other than Mr. Wallace? Mr. Reba.
So this is an amendment.
Yes, just hire the top two.
Hire two firms in number 57, AE group and Kesselman. Mr. Benomo.
Yes.
Dr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Pass.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Yannick?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Yes.
Amendment passes. Okay. So we still have to vote on the whole group, except for those two.
I'd like to just mention 59.
Yes.
Just briefly, my own personal feelings. Mr. John, very appropriately points out on a regular basis that you have to look at priorities and you have to live within your means. And in this day and age where I'm looking at a variety of things educationally that I think are critical, I have a hard time voting for number 59. I will be voting no.
And not to defend number 59, but if we don't do number 59, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a lawsuit that's gonna be larger than any that we've had to face since I've been on the board. And sometimes your priorities have to be done because there's certain regulations that have to be followed and we've let this go a long time and we've been very lucky that nothing's happened. And if we don't do it now, I will file the Title IX against the district on July 1st.
I will say, we kinda ran out of time on this motion, so that's why we structured it this way. Mr. Gunshore was looking at state contract vendors and we came up with this one. We believe the price is going to be pretty significantly lower than the 340, but they gave us a base price and we have to make some changes to the base price. But it looks like, and I don't wanna lock ourselves into a number, that this is gonna be somewhere in the low 200s at this point.
What about time element time?
We do feel it'll be finished by the end of July.
It will be. That's great.
And personally, I'd like to thank everybody for the work they put into this to get this off the ground because this wasn't easy. Mr. Gunshore, thank you.
And again, I would concur with Mr. Reba that the price, the numbers we looked at today are, in fact, significantly lower than what's indicated in this motion.
Okay, I believe we still need to vote on items 48 through 59. So, Mr. Reba.
Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on numbers 48 through 59. Mr. Benomo?
Yes.
Dr. Childs?
Yes on all but 59.
Mr. John?
Pass.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Yannick? Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
I guess, yes.
Numbers 48 through 59 are approved and number 57 was altered for the two firms.
Finance, approve items 60 through 72 with one motion.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we get a second there? Second. Okay. Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 60 through number 72, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I will vote no. I'm Mary Malone and Kevin O'Donnell, yes on the rest.
Ayes have it and the motion passes.
Recommend board approve Resolution 2015-3-26 regarding the settlement of tax assessment between HASD and Hazelton Generation LLC as recommended by Attorney Slusser.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
73, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Presentation of bills.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments on the bills?
Mr. Gunshore, the Low Bar Bill, is that the final bill for Maple Manor? No, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Reba.
74A through L, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda, approve items 75 through 89 with one motion.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
Yes, two. On 86, help me out with the definition of Doc Dave's these days. How does that, I haven't seen that word for quite a while.
What number, Dr. Childs?
Number, I'm sorry, I'm saying 86, don't mind me. I'm looking at the old one.
87, it is Doc.
It's.
87.
87.
Doc Dave's.
Yep, number 87, I'm sorry.
It has to be with the approval of the superintendent and it is a day without pay.
Thank you very much. The other one is not in that group.
Any other questions or comments on that group? Mr. Reba.
Number 75 through number 89, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
The next section, approve items 90 through 100 with one motion. We do have an amendment to number 92 to read as follows. Recommend board appoint Austin Smith, elementary teacher, effective 2/27/15, at a salary of $41,338 pending completion of Act 168 disclosure forms.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments on 92?
Yes, no, this is 338 as opposed to 348.
338, yes, that's correct. That's an amendment, yes.
Any other questions or comments on 92? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 90 through 100, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize. I'd like to go back to number 90 for just one moment. This young lady is, to me, is very painful situation. As she pointed out, that she was extraordinarily pleased with her job here in the district. She loved the students. She thought she was a tremendous help to the teacher and she thought the teacher enjoyed her presence in the classroom. But this is the young lady who pointed out to me that she couldn't make a living in this district, that she had to have, there were no benefits other than individual and that she was making a total of about 13,000 a year and you can't go on that. So once again, I would come back to the administration and say, we've gotta fix that and I'd appreciate very much anything you could do to bring that to our budget talks in a way that's reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did vote on 92.
Approve items 101 and 102 with one motion.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. They're on the agenda?
Questions or comments on 101 or 102? Mr. Reba.
Numbers 101 and 102, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
We have two additional new motions. Recommend the board deny HAESPA grievance number 0204-15 and recommend board deny HAEA grievance number 14-15-06.
Okay, any public comment on those two items since they're not on the agenda? Questions or comments from up here? Mr. Reba.
All in favor of the two new motions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on the second one.
No on the second one.
Ayes have it, motion passes.
Concludes the agenda. Mr. Chapman?
Thank you, Dr. Antonelli. I won't forget. Any other comments or questions from anyone up here before I ask Mr. Williams to come up to the microphone?
Mr. Chapman, I apologize for being behind all evening this evening, but on number 20, I'm hoping we will get some feedback. I would request that we get feedback from the students who come here to observe. I consider the feedback from an outside source to be particularly valuable to us.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, would you like to up to the microphone at this point? And once again, would you state your name, address, and what you'll be talking about tonight?
Good evening. My name is Orlando Williams. I live in West Hazleton, 112 North Broad Street. I'm here because my son attends MMI and he wants to play football for the Hazleton School District. I talk. I talked with Mr. Barletta, and was told he wouldn't be allowed to play, and I don't understand why, or why he couldn't be able to attend MMI and play for Hazen.
Would anybody here like to field that, or?
I believe, um, um, Attorney Slusser, if, if you can just explain, because we've run into this situation before, with other students who have come from other districts requesting to play, um, in, in some of our athletic, um, uh, you know, teams, so I, Attorney Slusser, if you could just shed some light on.
I, I don't, I actually don't remember what our previous designation was with regard to the preclusion issue.
It's, it's a three-step process that does require, uh, local approval, but it also requires-
I initiated it at the school.
Correct. It also requires district level approval, and then ultimately, state level with P I double A. So it's a three-step process, and quite frankly, it's a process, process that literally can take months.
Well, I, this, I started this in December. Okay, the letter was sent in December to Mr. Hood, President of the MMI. It was initiated then, and I'm not, he's actually not coming from another school district, he's in the Hazen School District.
No, but sir, and, and Mr. Barletta's not here, and I'm going to try, because I think I could help you here a little bit with the answer. It had, that would be classified as a cooperative sport, okay, because he's not enrolled in our district, it's another district. So if it's a cooperative sport, that's entirely different than in the past, where we've allowed students to come and participate on their own, representing their school. Okay, there's a difference between the two. If you go to a cooperative sport, then basically you have to open up your sports to students coming from other districts or other schools to participate, all right? We've allowed in individual sports, for instance, if he was running track, he could run as an independent student from MMI, and get his times and everything to qualify, but he couldn't run as part of our track team. We've never, uh, agreed to accept having cooperative sports, Dr. Antonelli said, going through that entire process, that is something that we've never done.
And I've been in the district forty-four years, and I, I could state, yeah, unequivocally that what Mr. Wallace is stating is true, we have never allowed anyone to participate under the cooperative parameters.
Well, let him participate independently.
But he can't, because it's a team sport.
It's a team sport.
That's the problem that you have. And I guess, sir, the philosophy that has existed over the period, over the period of time was, if it's, if they can participate individually, we've had, we've had these requests on a yearly basis, that's fine, but if it's a team sport, the philosophy has been, they would be taking a spot away from somebody who is in the district, so we did not want to get involved in cooperative sports for that reason, one of the reasons.
I disagree, but...
I hope I answered that correctly.
You, you did. I don't think I could have said it better.
I mean, it's like my kid's being punched because he goes to MMI. But, that's, that's just saying, that's just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Yes, thank you for waiting.
Any other, uh, public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, Teresa Radwinski from Drums, Pennsylvania, and, um, I am the president of the Hazleton Area Education Support Professionals, and I'd like to address this specifically to Dr. Childs and the rest of you. I've been here, meeting after meeting, where you have said that the bilingual paraprofessionals struggle to make a living. You need to know every paraprofessional struggle to make a living on the salary that we're paid. None of us work just one job, if we don't have a husband, we work three and four jobs. So, you need to take into consideration all of them, and you also need to take into consideration that the salaries that we're being paid are the salaries that the board decided to pay us. So unless you want to renegotiate, which would involve opening up the contract, and I don't think I'm willing to do that at this point. So, uh, just please keep in mind all of the paraprofessionals that struggle to make a living every day and feed our families on seventeen thousand dollars a year. It's, it's ridiculous.
I, I don't disagree with you at all, Mrs. Radwinski, I, and again, Mr. Mahalik has said it over and over again, and I agree with him, the whole situation needs to be looked at again, uh, given the financial constraints of everybody. My, my point has, my points have been, number one is you're requiring two certificates of those who are bilingual. Not only do they have to make, meet the, the, uh, basic associate's degree, but they also have to have a cert, certificate of, uh, the ability to speak two languages. Number two thing that I would say is that, of all the paraprofessional positions in this district, the only ones that are open at this point in time are bi, are the bilingual aides. That's true. Maybe, maybe Mrs. McHale can fill me, is there someplace else that I'm missing, Mrs. McHale?
Multi-handcapped.
Well, again, what I would tell you, Mrs. Radwinski, is that throughout the course this past year, there have never been more than eight bilingual aides, doctor, uh, uh, when Dr. Lake originally presented on the needs, he said, we needed thirty-six in this district, we're nowhere close. And that's, that's, that's why my focus continues to be there, I'm not dissing the other aides at all. What I'm trying to say, though, is that, that we are in desperate need in this particular area, because we have, uh, fifty-one percent of our students now are Hispanic. We have, what, five bilingual teachers?
We're aware of that, we're in the classroom.
Five, five, five bilingual teachers out of seven hundred and fifty? We've got six bilingual, six, eight bilingual aides to help out. You can't teach kids in a classroom where the teacher can't speak the language the students are speaking, it doesn't work. So, that's, that's, that's been my point. I'm not dissing you, I'm pointing out the needs, the bilingual, the needs for the bilingual aides that we need. Uh, how you get to that point between the, in the negotiation process? Sorry. How you get to that point in the negotiation process? I don't know, I'm not that smart, but, yeah, please, please do understand, I'm not dissing, I'm not putting down the needs of the aides in the district, the other aides, that is the educational, the special ed, they're all essential.
Well, exactly, they're all essential, and I think that it's time that we're recognized as an essential part of this district, and not just the people that change the diapers and feed the children and help out the teachers. We are an essential part of this district, and I tried to make that point clear, the negotiation team did, and it wasn't made clear by what we were offered. So I hope that this is a lesson for next time when we need to negotiate, that you take into consideration as to what is needed for the children, because we're a big part of them, and you're right, the teachers couldn't function daily, you know, we're a team.
Yep.
We need each other.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other, uh, public comments on non-agenda items from anyone? Anyone else up here? Meeting adjourned.